Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of October 22. We have the pleasure of having Troop Five and Troop Six in their leadership and moms and dads here this evening. Troop Five and Troop Six is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could all come up, please. You could please stand. You slide down a little so everybody has some space. There you go. We're gonna, we'll use this one and you guys, if you guys want to turn around. You can look at any flag that you so choose. Here we go. You ready? You guys want to start us off? And girls, sorry.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job. Take an extra moment for the camera and everybody. Thanks, everyone. Mr. Lefingwell pointed out that I typically will see what I go to all of the Eagle Scouts and I know some of my colleagues go to some or not most, if all, and we get to see the Eagle Scouts. We see, get to see the end result and we're seeing the beginning right here. So put this in your calendars, 18 years or 15 years from now, we're back here. So congratulations and thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We appreciate it. Before we get to our regular meeting, we also have two very special gentlemen here and I have a citation for both. Both are retiring from the town of Bristol, Roger Bellmore and Paul Drelle. And these are some significant numbers. I happen to open Roger's first. Roger, more than three decades, three decades, 30 years, and Paul, more than 30 years of service to the town. This count, thank you. If you watch a council meeting, you will hear me speak for this council to say thank you to our boards and commissions. If you watch after and before the Fourth of July or for the Christmas Festival, you'll hear us and me specifically call out DPW and I like to talk about Charlie Brown. Have you ever seen the Charlie Brown special? It starts with a really, really not so nice looking tree and they go like this. And then you get this beautiful tree at the end. So at the end of the Fourth of July Parade, it's things everywhere and then it's beautiful again. And that's what we can see. What we can't see is the efforts on a Tuesday morning and it's snowing outside and everybody's inside where it's warm. And they're doing the things necessary to keep this town going. Specifically Roger and Paul, 30 plus years of getting up every day and doing what was necessary to make Bristol what it is today. And you are a huge part of that. And we're going to take a second to do another round of applause for both of you. I'm going to go through these in a moment, but Mr. Administrator, I know you have a couple of wonderful pieces there too.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Paul and your entire family and Roger and your family that are all here. Thank you for your, well, 35 years and Roger, I think it was 36, right? Long time. But I think, and I think it's in the citation that the council all attested to, but not only were they dedicated with the public works during snowstorms, lizards, hurricanes, unforgasted storms. You also were committed to the town with other ventures. Paul, you've been in the fire department for probably since what, the 1980s or 70s? I don't know when you started there, but I think you were, when I joined, you're an assistant chief.
Forty-eight years ago.
Forty-eight years, yeah. Long time. Yeah. Well, and same thing with Roger, a long time. Roger also helps out quite a bit with King Philip Little League, which is, which is real important. So thank you for that. But we, I'm able, when you, when you get your citations, we also have two watches from the residents of the town. And hopefully when you wear them, you'll, you'll know who it came from. Was it, was from all the residents that you served quietly. Your last roles, Paul was doing ground maintenance. And so he would take care of the entrance ways into town, those mums that are planted out there, Paul planted them. The trash containers early in the morning, he empties them out. His truck is always waxed. Occasionally you'd stop in about 10 o'clock and you tell me what, some of the issues that needed to be corrected around town, minor issues. So I'm an open invitation, if you want to continue to do that as a private citizen, 10 o'clock, I'll go for a ride. It'll be my gas this time, but we'll go. Yeah. And Roger's last role at DPW was hauling. So not many people recognize this or are aware, but hauling trucks, right? Direct, sometimes three trips a day, Roger, up to Johnston. And we've had, thank God, no, no issues in accidents, but it's a serious business, a lot of weight he's hauling, he's hauling every day. So hopefully whoever takes over for you has the same commitment and stays safe like you did Roger. So. Well, anyway, that's all I have to say, but I'm looking forward to handing the watches over to these fine gentlemen and I hope, hopefully they, they continue their service to the town and with good health. And thank you to the families for supporting them.
So I'm going to start with Roger, since I have his open three decades, as we talked about, Roger served the town with distinction. He was also United States Air Force. Thank you for your service. And an active member of the Bristol Elks, longtime member of the Bristol Fire Department. Interesting you hear a reoccurring theme, huh? Is that people who give continue to give in many, many ways. Paul, a longtime member of the Bristol Fire Department, as we've talked about, and Fire Police, his continued dedication, excuse me, dedication to service and community safety, more than three decades with the DPW. You've seen a lot of changes. I know and fire, sorry, the trash trucks are, made a huge difference in, in your quality of life and your coworkers' quality of life, not having to pick up heavy pieces. And I'm reminded of a couple of stories I've heard of standing on the back of a trash truck and someone would throw away, and they didn't know that they were doing anything wrong, it'd be full of sawdust. And when the compactor would squeeze, it would shoot the sawdust out in your eyes. And that's just one of many examples. I know for myself, I've moved my trash can in the summer and my goodness, it smells wonderful. But I only have to move one. Thank you very much. So, and that's just one of many things. I point that out, but DPW has done so much and you both have done so much. If I may, can I have you both come up so I can give you these citations, please? Can you both come up? Roger, on behalf of the people of Bristol, congratulations on your retirement. Paul, on behalf of the people of Bristol, congratulations on your retirement. Open those up.
It's still ticking? It's still what, works?
All right, congrats, guys.
Thank you, Chief, for your assistance. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, guys.
So we got to start the meeting with Cub Scouts. We recognize two gentlemen that gave back so much. We're just, we live in a beautiful town, don't we? My goodness. Madam Clerk.
We do. We really do.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes. We have the town council meeting minutes from October 1st as well as the executive session minutes also from October 2, October 1st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C1. This is ordinance 2025-12 for Chapter 16 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 5, Stopping, Standing, and Parking. And this is for parking prohibited at all times at 150 to 180 Franklin Street. This is second reading.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. To approve. Any discussion?
This is it, right? Is this it? Yeah, this is it.
Yes, it is.
We've been, we've been doing this for a few years now at this spot.
Exactly. Well, hopefully it is.
I hope it fixes it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's okay to make noise. They worked for the town for 35 years. It's okay to say, really? Well, we'll work through it. It's okay.
The next item on the agenda is C2. This is ordinance number 2025-13, Chapter 16 Motor Vehicles and Traffic. And this is for parking prohibited at all times on Franklin Street on the south side, 26 feet from the east corner of the driveway in front of 208 Franklin Street. This is second reading.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. As stated, any discussion?
This is the Franklin Court. Other one was not.
The other one was Franklin Court.
So, okay, good.
Oh, okay, okay.
Actually both.
Oh, they both, okay, they both are, yeah.
In and around the area.
All good. Traffic safety, right?
Improvements being.
Better, improved visibility.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C3. This is ordinance 2025-14. This is for a correction of ordinance 2025-03, Chapter 17, Article 2 of the alcoholic beverages. And this is to correct the decrease in the number of limited BV, limited license from seven to four. First reading.
Make a motion that constitutes first reading.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary. As stated, any discussion?
Yes, I'm glad that you clarified that because I noticed that we were going from seven to four, which is quite a gap. Normally we don't, we go one or two when I saw that amount, but you've explained that.
It's a correction for one of the ordinances that passed. So we're just making sure that everything is transparent and it's done correctly. So that's why you see it on there again for first reading.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1. This is Haley Scarback from CLAR LLC, doing business as Salt Boutique Spa, 173 State Street. This is a request for sidewalk use license.
I'm filling in for my wife.
I didn't want to say anything, but you didn't.
She's in Virginia visiting the grandkids today.
Excellent. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm William Scrayback.
And the address?
This address is 173 State Street, Bristol Road Island.
Thank you. So you're in front of this council requesting a sidewalk use license? Could you tell us a little bit more about what you're actually looking to do on that sidewalk?
We're looking to put out seats and chairs just in the wider section. I get the streets confused whether it's state or hope.
Estate.
It's the wider one, estate, yeah. We did have it out there, didn't know we had to have a permit. And then Tony stopped over and said hello to me. So I met him and he explained how it works. And then we filled out the paperwork and then we never got it submitted during the summertime. So we finally got all the paperwork and here we are now.
And you get to come at a really neat meeting too. It's kind of nice stuff. So you, so just tables and chairs for people to wait and kind of more inviting location look to it? Gotcha. All right.
And we are going to keep it right up against the building. It's not going to be out. And there's still plenty of room for a big wheelchair too, if they need to get by.
Excellent. Okay.
Chairman, based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. As stated, any discussion?
It looks beautiful. That building looks beautiful, but like it's so inviting, you know, a lot of window space on the street. It looks terrific.
Thank you very much.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Agreed. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you guys very much.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is D2. This is Sean Riley, Mason and Twine LLC, doing business as Tamp, 539 Wood Street. This is a request for vitroling license.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sean Riley, 359 Wood Street, here in Bristol, the former Mello's Shoe Repair. So we are hoping to open as a small coffee shop and chocolatier. We started our journey at the Tiverton Farmers Market a year ago, October 5th. From there, we've developed a pretty great following, a lot of great people that we've met there. Every Saturday for a year, we've developed lots of great customer interactions and relationships. And we decided that we wanted to approach you guys to open up a brick and mortar where people can come and get coffee every day of the week, not just Saturdays.
I think it's great. And you, you spoke in classic Rhode Islandese, what it used to be. That's how we speak. That's how we know where, like I was going to say.
Everybody knows the legendary.
Where compacters used to be, that kind of thing. So, but Mike's place, so.
Right, right next to Salt Spa.
Right, yeah. I know.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, I'm a little disappointed you didn't bring chocolate truffles, but you know.
You know, I, I thought about it, but I thought it might be taken in the wrong way.
It'd be crossing the line a little bit.
It'd be crossing the line.
I recollection, anything under $25 is okay.
Good to know.
But thank you for choosing Bristol, you know, we're happy you're here and, and you know, we know you're going to do well. And based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron. Discussion, I'll start. I know that you reached out to the clerk and asked if this could be, this license could go through 2026. So typically this license would expire on November 30th, which is a little bit over 30 days. And you're paying X dollars for the license. I personally don't have any issue with having it go through next year. For my colleagues' clarity, I did reach out to the solicitor. And the clerk also confirmed that we can do that if we so choose to. I'm making a certain point here is because we would normally do this, but with approximately 30 days until it renews, it seems very appropriate to me.
Yeah.
You're not even open yet. When are you opening to open?
So I have the Health Department coming on the, on Monday, hope to open doors on the 29th of October.
Okay, yeah. Well, keep us posted on that.
Certainly will.
So if we pass this and we're going to vote here in a second, then it would go through, unless anybody disagrees, through November 2026. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D3. This is the Bristol Christmas Committee, Rayona Clemens. This is a request for one day dancing and entertainment licenses for the Christmas Festival at Unity Park, 500 Hope Street on Saturday, December 6th from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM and Sunday, December 7th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Before we have discussion, can I have a motion from the council to combine D3 and D4? They're both on this.
So move.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tanya Kiran, the general chairman of this year's Bristol Christmas Festival. Forty-six days to the big day where we light up the town like it's a Hallmark movie. So make sure you're there or you're square. Before I turn it over to Rayona, I just want to do a little plug. We have our Christmas ornaments for 2025. It's the Bristol Post Office. We'll be having some pop-ups for the next month, especially during the walkabout, a holiday preview and the grand opening of the Santa House. So be on the lookout for our pop-ups. If you haven't already, make sure you liked our Facebook page and you can check our website for updates anytime. And if you are looking to purchase an ornament for $20, you could reach us on the website or give one of us a call. You know how to get us, you know, reach us through the Santa phone. We'll come right away. We are going to do the Grand Illumination at Unity Park and we elves have been working very hard to prepare this. And Rayona has an update for you along with some of the issues and what's going on. Yes, sir.
Just give clarity on that because it sounded like we weren't going to do it downtown. I know that's not what you meant, but could you, so obviously we have our.
The Grand Illumination is going to be in front of the Burnside Building, yes. But the Christmas.
Didn't want to scare anybody.
Yeah. It's, it's always, always going to be at our town Christmas tree, right in front of the Burnside Building. That'll never change. But the, the market, as you all know, got really, really huge. And we, we were not able to fit it into the Hope Street area. So we had to expand. We had to find a new location, just like the Bristol Fourth of July Committee likes to do that with their concerts. So we're at Unity Park, if you know where Pivotal and Brick is, and we're going to have plenty of entertainment, plenty of action, craft fair, vendors, food trucks, photo opportunities and special surprises. So be sure to get down there. Rayona?
So I took this on. I sat with Joe Britto and I also sat with the BMA. I don't know if everybody's aware of that. And we couldn't make that work. So we are on our own at Unity Park where we are going to present the Bristol Christmas Festival. I am here for dancing and entertainment license. I am not looking for any kind of liquor license. There will be no serving of alcohol at this event unless it is a proprietor that is actually licensed by the town of Bristol. So I just need to make that point blank clear. I am of a believer that alcohol and children are not a good combination. I've been this way most of my natural life and I would like to continue that. So what we have is Saturday, starting at 11:00 AM, we will have entertainment. And what that includes is we have dance groups, we have a few singers, we have a Grinch that will be a photo op for the kids. I am working on a Santa Claus, which would be a living statue if we can come to agreement because my budget is tight. I am that person. We are hoping to have a statue of, a moving, a living statue of Santa Claus. On Sunday, it would be the same thing. We do have a train for the children that was requested and I do have that under contract. So with this council's approval, I would like to have it technically as a dancing and entertainment license. And the littles, we're hoping to have the littles come in and dance, but I need your approval to do so.
So what's on, on, in front of us, I combined, the council combined both requests. So we have the one day dancing and entertainment.
It's two day.
Right. I'm going to read it out here. On Saturday, December 6th, from 9 until 6:00 PM. And Sunday, December 7th, from 9 until 5:00. And then the request for mobile food truck permits is also those same times listed here.
Yes, Nathan, that's correct.
We just combined both of those together.
We did not overlap food vendors either. I am truly a believer that Bristol needs to succeed first. So what I did was the food vendors that are coming in are, do not produce the same products as what is on site. And I thought that only fair to the people who are allowing us to be there. That being said, yes, you are absolutely correct. I just need to add to that, the night of the Grand Illumination, we are not overlapping illumination time. So it does say 6 o'clock and that's to get most people who are there off-site of property, the, at Unity Park. And what I mean by that is we want them at the lighting. So we are making announcements starting at 3:00 PM, every half hour. And it may be louder each time, just to remind people that the event at, the Grand Illumination event at Burnside Building will be taking place and that the street will be shut down at 4:00 PM.
Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion?
Yes, just briefly, the, obviously there's recommendations from the police and the fire department. And obviously you'll be working with them, you know, to follow the, you know, safety plan as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief?
There are detail officers that are commissioned to work that event. So there will be police and fire at that, during the times of operation.
Thanks, Chief. Mary?
Thank you.
I just wanted to, quick question. Are you going to be back? Yeah. Are you going to be in the back where you were last, where it was last year or is going to be in front of pivotal or in the back?
So last year, they had food vendors in the back and they use Pivotal Brewery for vendors.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So this year, we are going to kind of maintain the same things last year, the same map, if you will. But O'Brien and Bro has opened their doors to us as well. So that worked to our favor and into the favor, favor of safety. What that allows us to do is have an extra passageway for crowd control. So it won't be difficult where people are working into like a bottleneck, if you will. It will be a more freely movable space. And Captain Steven St. Pierre is very much in tune to the safety plan from last year. And just the minute details of what we need to change for this year, but he's all about it.
Now, are you having a shuttle like you had last year?
We are not having a trolley because we are not a holiday festival by name. We are the Bristol Christmas Festival.
Okay, I don't think I quite understand that, but there's, in other words, you, everybody's going to be walking to the event where from wherever they park. And, and if they want to walk down to the Santa House, they would walk down separately.
Absolutely, because the Santa House opens on November 22nd. So yes. And it's much easier for people to walk. I mean, the distance, the walkability is great because the sidewalks are great. That being said, they can park their car at one place and walk to everything downtown. So that's what makes this even more fabulous.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion from the council?
Chairman, I just, and my colleagues, I just want to thank this group as the liaison to this group. It's a small but mighty group. And I want to thank you for all your effort for bringing the community together and just working hard on this because I know there's not a lot of you and you've spent a lot of time putting this together and it's a lot of effort that goes into to spread the holiday cheer. So just want to, just want to point it out. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E1. This is the three-month review for AZJ, Aiden's Doing Business as Aiden's Pub, Michael Croft, Croft, 5 John Street. This is for the modification of the dancing and entertainment license to include outdoor entertainment on Fridays.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Michael Cockcroft. This is 5 John Street, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Okay. So you are in front of this council for a three-month review. You and a couple of other establishments. Chief, could you? So we have a recommendation from the police department. Is it conditional approval? There were 19 calls of those. And Chief, you can give us some clarity on, on the more or less critical ones? But if you could just kind of weigh in on that, please.
Yes, anytime a petition comes through the police department, we take a look through our CAD RMS. That's our computer aided dispatch acronym for Records Management System. And it noted that there were 19 calls or complaints to the police department about issues at this establishment. One was unfounded, 13 were noise complaints, individuals leaving the establishment that were noisy outside were three. Loud music was seven, staff throwing out trash, two. And then there was additional complaints, male potty lost his friend, friend located, threats investigated, a group causing issues inside the establishment dispersed by the police. A disturbance, all individuals involved were dispersed and two disturbances were unfounded that were called into the police department. There's a note here from the officers that certainly put that together and I would recommend it that maybe Mr. Cockcroft make an appointment with the police department in my office so that we could go through these complaints. And maybe come up with some proactive ideas so that area residents, you know, are not continuously impacted. You know, there's a better relationship between the business and the residential neighborhood who have called in these 19 calls to service in three months.
Does that sound reasonable to you?
Very reasonable to me, very.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I know we have about four, five, I think it is, this evening. And as I was reading through the report from the police, as Chief just highlighted, I was very upset and very disappointed, actually. Maybe I should say not upset. very upset and very disappointed, actually, maybe I should say, not upset, to the fact that in three months, 19 calls, and this was for review this evening, considering that the others, the most was two for one other. So my recommendation is going to be that we do a three-month review again, and also a meeting be set up with the police department.
Tony, are you saying a three-month review and then another three-month review? Is that-
No, they already had one, so they, before us to actually clear that. But what I'm saying is that we need to continue. We should do a three-month review with also a meeting with the police department.
So follow the recommendation of the police department?
Exactly.
Okay.
I just wanted to, you know, sort of concur with my colleague that these are very large numbers. I mean, I have not, I've been in the council on and off for many years. I have not seen these kind of numbers in such a short period of time in a very, 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 very long time. And it's one of the things that the council, several councils have worked very hard on, to mitigate that loud bar-like scene in the downtown area. And certainly, you know, what used to be Giller East was a big offender of that in other, in other places. And to make sure we try to keep control on it. And so it's very, it was very shocking to see that, to be honest with you.
I agree. I doubled security since the beginning of the school year, basically. So we're definitely buckling down and trying to do the right thing by the town and the neighbors. There's specifically one or two neighbors that I speak to frequently and say, hey, I'll do my best to keep them off their property and, you know, the noise down. But yeah, it's, it's a lot of calls.
Chief, were there any like patterns to the noise complaints or anything like that? I mean, were they, were they during a certain time of the year? Or I know that it was like a three-month review, but were they clustered in one area or pretty much dispersed over the three months?
I'd have to further, you know, prior to our meeting with them, I certainly will break down those reports individually and, you know, have a better plan, you know, to work with, with the business owner, to, you know, give some proactive solutions. So I'll break down each one of these 19 instances, and I'll look for any of those patterns or trends. It could be a certain time with the music that it's played to, maybe there's an agreement to, you know, maybe turn the music off a little bit earlier. And, you know, we'll try to come up with some holistic solutions that work to support the business, but also, you know, a supportive of the complaints in the residents in and around the establishment.
May I just say that, you know, it's going to be like, these three months will be the holidays, the students will be gone for a large amount of that time, and it'll be getting colder. And I just, I mean, I don't, I don't foresee as many issues. But I think we just have to make sure that the plan is for the season, like when May hits and the students are getting ready, in April, getting ready to leave. I live on High Street, and I know it's Thursday night, it's right, you know, the kids are all coming up from, up from Dame Street area, or coming down from Wood Street area, and, you know, it's very, very, very noisy. And you can, you can pretty much track like when it's really out of control, and definitely, you know, correlates with the, the nicer weather, obviously. But I think that hopefully you'll work on a plan that will be good for these three months, because if you end up with a situation like this in these three months, then we're going to have some serious issues for the future. But also, what happens when the, the doors are open, the weather is warm, everybody's out, people are all downtown, that's really what I think we, you need to get something that works all the way around.
Right. I agree.
Listen, my, my colleagues, I agree with all of them. We want you to be successful. We want you to thrive, and we love what you're doing in the community, but we can't, we can't have this type. So have you thought of corrective behavior? Have you put a plan? I know you're going to be working with the chief, but how tonight, when you're talking to us, you're on TV, how can you assure the public that you're, you guys are going to take action? Have you, have you guys started to formulate any sort of plan or?
I'll meet with one of the owners specifically and see what, you know, he wants to do with their situation. Yet, we have talked about, you know, limiting the amount, more of the amount of people coming into the building.
Okay.
And then just, you know, keeping, making sure the sidewalks are clear, making sure the streets are clear when, when they're actually there. And we do have soundboards up, they probably need to be improved.
Okay.
Other than that, I mean, again, I'll speak to the owner and see what he wants to do.
Mr. Cockcroft, what is your position there?
I'm the general manager.
Thank you. So I think, Mike, you can hear the tone from my colleagues.
Oh, yes, definitely.
I, but it's really important that you know, that for myself, and probably for my colleagues, if, if you're back in front of us like this in three months, we'll probably be at a show cause hearing, because it's not okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So just, I don't want to have any misconceptions or-
No, no.
Okay. All right. So what I heard from the council, Tony, you said that the meeting with the chief, right, reiterating that?
Correct. And just an extension of another three-month review.
Okay. I take that as a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E2. This is the three-month review for Liberado's Lounge and Restaurant LLC, doing business as The Beach House for 805 Hope Street. And this was for the modification of the dancing and entertainment license to include the outdoor entertainment Monday through Sunday, 6 to 9.
I make a motion that we approve it.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E3. This is the three-month review for Dame Street Landing Tavern Company LLC, doing business as The Wolf Tavern, 259 State Street. This was also for the modification of the dancing and entertainment license to include the outdoor on Wednesdays from 6 to 9.
Based on our recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E4, the three-month review for Coca-Cola Culinary Consulting LLC, doing business as Judge Roy Bean, 1 State Street. This was also for the modification of the dancing and entertainment license to include the entertainment on Sundays from 12 to 6:00 p.m.
Based on our recommendation, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the last three-month review is E5. This is the three-month review for Lobster Pot, Jeffrey Hirsch, 119, 121, Hope Street. This is the modification of the dancing and entertainment license to include the outdoor entertainment on Sundays from 3 to 6:00 p.m.
Based on our recommendation, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for being here too, Jeff.
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1. This is Dominic Di Pietro, 274 High Street. And this is a request for streetlights to be added on pole number 22 between State Street and Bradford Street.
Is the petitioner here? Please. Mr. Di Pietro, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Dominic Di Pietro, 274 High Street, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thanks for having me.
So you are petitioning the council for a, adding a streetlight. We have all kinds of recommendations in front of you. You may be familiar with those recommendations already. The, the general recommendation was to deny the request based off a few things, and I'm going to give the departments and the administrator a moment just to express why they're suggesting the denial. And also, I understand, I'm probably getting to the end a little quick here, but there was a streetlight near your residence that is not functioning, whether it needs a new LED emitter or otherwise, and I understand that's being addressed. But Chief, could we start with you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Captain Roman Wozni, as I indicated earlier, went through what we call the CAD RMS, the Computer Aided Dispatch Records Management System, to see if there had been any historical calls of service in that general area, or anything related to poor, poor street lighting. So a check was done through our indices, and we're unable to locate anything that would rise to the concern that ancillary security issues needed to be taken. What the officers did notice, as you put down, a third utility pole, number 20, in front of 295 High Street, has a working streetlight. And they did notice that there was an inoperable streetlight, which has been reported. That is pole number 21 at 281 High Street is currently inoperable. We reported that to DPW for service, and our hope is that it'll provide additional lighting in that area. And we'll take a second look once that that pole is, is repaired.
So we think there will be an, we know there'd be an improvement there with that light being prepared. Okay. Mr. Administrator, did you, I know that we have recommendations from you, we have, that you concurred with.
Yeah, I concurred with the police department and their, their call log, and also Director Williamson, I think she can speak on, on-
Yes, Diane.
-street lighting in general.
So my recommendation is consistent with other recommendations on this same topic. You know, we don't, we, we want to encourage dark sky. We have a comprehensive plan action item to have a dark sky ordinance. The lights on the poles that are existing are spaced as we would normally see them. And there is a, a streetlight, or rather, a light, I believe, on the adjacent property to illuminate the playground area. So I felt that there was lighting consistently with what we normally require or see in these neighborhoods, and also lighting on the adjacent private property. I didn't, I didn't see a need for this additional light. And then to, to echo what the chief had reported with the outage. So, so I didn't see a need for an additional light.
I feel like a year ago, we had a similar thing that came up about a light.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not here.
Yeah, definitely a different part of town.
Okay.
Well, I-
Mary?
Just as a discussion, I have to say, I'm disappointed with the outcome of the recommendations. I can't speak to the specific pole number, but living in that area, like probably a block from you, it is incredibly dark. I find it incredibly dark on High Street, especially since we went to LED lights. I feel like we have them turned down. It is, I mean, if you have, if it's a cloudy night, you, it is pitch dark. The tree canopy along High Street is very, very, very full, very, very dark. People cross the street, somebody, I mean, I wasn't that close to them, but I was like, wow, you know, if you weren't paying attention, cross the street, all dressed in dark colors, and, you know, in this very dark area. And it is like concerning. I mean, there was a light, and I, you know, I kept first hand and figure out which pole it was, because I don't, I'm not usually out, but in the summer, there was, there was a light on High Street out all summer, the entire summer. And I really think that this has to be rethought. And I'm just going to say, this is a little bit, hopefully I can say this, because I do believe it is germane to this topic. And notice tonight, when you all go up to the, although your lights will be shining on it, when you all go up to the top of Court Street, where we have the Santa House. The Santa House is lit, but the rest of the High Street, and right adjacent where people are waiting to go into the Santa House, is like a dark hole. It is very, very dark. It's very dangerous, all those children out there. And I really, you know, would encourage the town to, if nothing else, you know, take a light from the fire truck, you know, the fire department, or, or maybe DPW has them, I don't know who has them, maybe put it by Reynolds School and just shine it across the street. Incredibly dark and potentially dangerous, especially on a dark and cloudy night. And if there's any, so I'm just saying, that's one issue, but it's very dark there, and I thought about it many times. So I just want to say, in relation to, I've been around government for a long time. I would never think to call the police that it was dark, and say, hey, what's your problem? Well, my problem is, it's dark on the street. I would think to call a different department. So I don't think that that is, I just don't think that that's really like a relevant aspect of it, to look at calls for service, because if that's what you have to do, then people are going to be like, okay, then I got to call the police department for this. I, I don't understand why you would call the police department. If I was going to call somebody in the town, I'd call the administrator's office or DPW. I wouldn't call the police about this.
I think the petitioner, and he can speak, I think, I think the-
Don't worry, you'll get a moment to speak.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the police department circled back on that, because there was, in the petition, it stated that there were concerns of public safety issues.
Well, no, I know that, because there's, there's a party house on Congregational Street, it's no big secret, everybody knows that. I mean, so there's some serious issues. And like I just said a minute ago, you know, on the aid, not just aid, it's, people are coming up Church Street, State Street, Bradford Street, just, you know, when the, when the places are closing downtown, they're all coming up, and they're all students. I mean, when I was a student, walking, hanging out in Boston, I was probably loud too, you know? So I'm sure, I don't think I was, I know I was. But, you know, I mean, it is what it is, and it's part of it, but that is this added danger, when it's so dark out there on some of these nights, just adds to it. And I don't think it's appropriate to have it quite that dark, so.
Mr. Di Pietro?
Yeah, thank you.
I wanted, I'm sorry, I did, I, what I wanted you to hear was the recommendations to us. So that's, that's why I started in that direction.
Oh, yeah, I guess we weren't supposed to speak yet, but-
No, it's okay. It's not a public hearing, so go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of the recommendations bring up good points. I have some notes. Pole 20, LEDs, it's only 50% lit, unlike the streetlight in front of Mary's.
... to be sent to Matt for his service. I know he's going to be assisting us in a different capacity.
And Tony ever advertise?
Yes, that is true.
And we can say, thank you right now, Tony.
He's right there.
Okay.
We can save the letter. No, we're going to send the letter out. Was there a second there? I'm sorry. Was there a second?
Yeah, there's, oh, a second.
Second.
Oh, did you do a second?
Yeah. So that motion was made by Tony, seconded by Aaron to send a letter of thanks, and also to advertise any of the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G2. This is the Bristol Christmas Festival Committee with unexpired terms set to expire February 2026. And you have a recommendation for additional board members from the chairwoman?
Make a motion to accept the recommendation from the chairperson?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is the part where I always say thank you to our boards and commissions. And Matt, since you're here, thank you for your service on the personnel board. And I was joking about the letter, we will send that out. It is the time that people take away from their family and friends to give back to this community, which makes this community wonderful. So this council says, thank you. Madam Clark?
So Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H1. This is discussion and possible action for the future use of Geteras School. This is continued from September 10, 2025. The council will also note, there's a received at meeting packet with the presentation that was uploaded into the public portal, and I believe that's the presentation that's going to be given today.
Excellent. Eric, do you need a moment, or you?
That one has even the one before that, isn't it?
Thank you for the time. A little, little technical difficulty, but I think we're there. This is actually just a conversation starter about the Geteras School and what it may or may not be used for. One idea that has been floated out was to use it as a town hall, and maybe combine the Reynolds School Building with the departments that are in there in the town hall. So we're just going to flip through some of the, some of the-
That was very smooth.
We're just, I'm just, I'm just happy it's working out. The last 15 minutes, we didn't even have it. So just a little history. Back in 1917, Dr. Geteras, who was a Bristol resident, left $350,000. Left it to the town to build the school and have it named in the Geteras name. But some of the, some of the components of his will and their final wishes were that it would be called the Geteras Building, and also that any funds that were remaining from the, the endowment would, could only be used by the town for that particular building. by the town for that particular building. So just want to talk about compound interest that $350,000 has left $1.7 million in the Geteras Endowment currently. So for the past 100 years, give or take, the school has been used as an elementary school and a junior high school. Just recently, it was decommissioned by the school department and has been or will be turned over to the town, basically due to declining enrollment. So currently, the town has ownership control over four school buildings, decommissioned school buildings, Byfield School, Wally School, Reynolds, and now Geteras. Byfield and Wally are on the Town Common, so they have a little more complexities. This is what you can and cannot do with them. The Geteras School, like I said, it is, the money that was left can only be used by the town for that particular school. And do want to walk through and a few, maybe a couple of meetings ago, Christine Shay from the architect firm that we use gave an overview, said the building was in, you know, very good shape and has some cosmetic things that need to be dressed. But essentially, the building is sound. In looking at it to flip it over for office space, yes, there will be money needed to be spent, but going from classroom space to office buildings isn't a far reach. Each floor is approximately 14,000 square feet, two floors and a half finished basement. The town in the school building would retain the parking and the playground on the property. The athletic fields would remain under the care and control of the school department for their use. So the thought that was being somewhat discussed and open to discussion with the council, town administrator and others would be, like I said, to consolidate Community Development Department at the Reynolds Building and the departments within this building and move them all to Geteras. That would consolidate everything into a more convenient for residents. And it would, it would allow more control over access. There are some areas that you see here that are windows. We need them for walk-up service, et cetera. Then there are other departments that maybe would benefit from not being so accessible. Not, not saying it wouldn't be an open door policy, but sometimes, you know, there are things that need to be scheduled. So for instance, the walk-up access would remain what you see, tax collector, town clerk, building official, HTC, co-compliance, and then also be some public meeting space. Some of the areas that would be a little more scheduled or, you know, just a little more remote from the public would be the town administrator, finance, human resources sources, community development planning, zoning, the council chambers, and municipal court. So the accessibility and security would be improved for the town departments. Like I said, some, we just did a training here in town hall with the police department to, you know, just make people aware of, you know, our security protocols and what could happen or, you know, and how to respond. So, you know, we did learn a bit from that. We could also have some technical, technology improvements, which we just witnessed once again tonight with our Zoom and our streamings. They're not so reliable, but it gives us an opportunity to improve those, maybe upgrade some, some systems. The council would have a dedicated, a dedicated spot, council chambers rather than a multi-purpose area. So when the architects designed their floor plan, they gave us a schematic, and I think Christine was, had the, had the boards the last meeting, but maybe a little bit easier to see here. The basement that's shown right now would, you know, have utility rooms, HVAC, some of the mechanicals and file storage. So that would be in the basement area of the school. First floor would house a reception area, the town clerk department, and that would be all the walk-up windows with building official, HTC, co-compliance, tax, and some public meeting space that can be used for other boards, commissions, and just general, general spaces that would be desired by the public. Second floor would house the town administrator's office, HR, finance, community development, and that's where council chambers would also convene. We'd also, was it first floor, second floor would have the vault that we currently have here, would go with the town clerks. So some of the building needs, obviously, there's going to need to be some retooling to build offices, move, move a wall, take, take away a wall. Essentially, it's a lot of painting and flooring. As you see, the floor on the first floor is, you know, appropriate for an elementary school. May want to do something with that if the time comes. Would also need to do some painting, flooring, HVAC systems. IT and security would need to be, all the cabling and fiber would need to be either added to or at least, there's some existing, but we would need to make it suitable for the town's needs. Same with alarms, access controls, and security cameras. Some of the financial considerations that we're kind of looking at, just off, just high level discussion was the Geteras Endowment that could go toward any construction, maintenance, et cetera, that's currently needed. If we were to vacate the two properties, Court Street and High Street, right now, they're assessed at approximately $4 million for both of them. If you put those on the market to sell, don't know what you would get right now, but those are the assessed values. So it would be somewhere in that ballpark, I would, it's safe to assume. And with the sale of those, each of those properties have the potential to generating tax money for the town. Looking at the utilities, if we were to do away with the utility services at both High Street and Court Street, that's like $75,000 combined, whereas Geteras, their annual utility costs were approximately $56,000. So there'd be some additional savings there. Some of the other benefits that would be from consolidating and moving into the one building, we would now no longer be responsible for $12,000 annual fee to rent 16 spaces across the street. It would also open up to 22 spots where staff park currently behind the historical society. And it would make it just a convenient, more of a one-stop shop for residents and anyone doing business with the town. The building's also more recognizable as a government center. It's, you know, people drive by it now and say, is that town hall? Or that should be town hall? There's a lot of positive comments along that line. It does look like what could be a government center. As opposed to just a town hall, there'd be a lot more going on in there. Sufficient space for the boards and commissions meetings and other entities that would want to have meetings there would be available to them as well. ADA accessible, has an elevator and an entrance. It would just eliminate the management and expense of two other buildings. That location has plenty of parking, 48 spots that would sufficient for staff, for visitors who come, any other uses. Plenty of spots there. There's also currently a gym in there and Director Renzahausen already had mentioned that he may be able to actually use that for programming. There's a lot of kids in this downtown area that don't necessarily have the means to get to Quintegamlin to use the, the basketball court up there. So maybe opportunities to open it up to the public for that. The Fourth of July Committee had also mentioned they're looking for a spot that they can hold, have their memorabilia room. This may be an ideal situation where we can carve out some space for them to have a Fourth of July sort of museum, if you will. Could also maybe revisit the visitor's center. It may be a perfect place to do something like that. It also has some just traditional memories. A lot of people went to school there, the Bristolians who are still around would be coming to pay their taxes and just.
Still around? I went to school there. What are you saying?
Population is changing. I mean, you got to admit.
It's a beautiful school.
It's probably going to be.
I agree.
Where there's fewer Bristolians and a lot of people who live in Bristol. But those who have grown up here and gone through the school system, there'll be some soften the blow of paying the taxes to say, hey, this was my third grade class. So whatever our next step may be, you know, the council and town administrators, you know, and after getting some public input, where do you begin? You could go to an architect and ask them to design it and come out with a big bill that's going to bring you back to value engineering anyhow. So if you start value, value engineering with maybe the $1.7 million that's in the endowment and just sort of pick and choose what the high priority areas are, and that will give us a pretty solid idea of how much it would cost to, you know, do the renovations and work necessary to get it to where we want it as a, as a government center, if that is the desire. But this was designed just to be a conversation starter, give some information about where we are, what we have, and, you know, hopefully at some point in the near future, come to the decision and move on. So with that, thank you, and forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Eric. This was a lot of hard work here. Thank you. A lot of information. Mr. Administrator, did you want to share anything before I ask the council?
No, just, I think it's a very good opportunity for the town to consolidate our two buildings, put everyone in one building. I think it's, I think will save money, as you can see with the utility bills that we researched, getting two buildings sold back on the, back on the, add them to the tax rolls. You heard about savings on parking lot leases, additional parking will have some of the functions and uses of the new building. Obviously, we'd keep the Burnside building, but that Burnside would be available upstairs. We could have municipal court in the new town government center, the new town hall. So there's a lot of benefits to it. I don't see many negatives here. So I think, I think it's a very, you know, I'd like to see us move forward after, you know, a lot of dialogue and discussion. I'd like to really see us move forward and, and get in RFQ out there for project manager and architect and we look to use the endowment. So it won't cost the taxpayers any money. Actually, I see nothing but savings here and efficiency.
Counsel?
I think it'd be a great town hall and it's right to the entrance of town. Everybody sees it. It's a magnificent looking building. I know that, you know, we've talked about moving and consolidating to Reynolds or to other places. This is a much more fitting location, I believe. And I think people seem excited and many people have, when it first came up as, you know, that it would be going back to the town and no longer used as a school, I mean, many people thought that would be an obvious like town hall project. So I think it's a great idea and we should take the next steps just to, you know, pursue the feasibility of it. Like we already had some input and then just come up with an actual design type of thing and see what it will actually cost to do this.
Mary, I'm in agreement with you. I think this is a fantastic idea to keep the school in service. It's been part of Bristol's history for generations. I think we have a good plan as far as a funding source. And I'm in support, Mary, without repeating everything that you had said to move forward with the request for an RFQ. And I'd be just interested to find out timeline, because I think this is definitely something we want to move forward with and soon.
Are you making a motion in that?
So moved.
No, no, no.
I heard a.
Motion to find the timeline?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
So motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Discussion?
It really has a good ring to it. I like the fact of Geteras Government Center. Sounds really good. Rather than Geteras Town Hall, I don't think that would be a good thing. But I like the term that's already been used, you know, as a government center. So it certainly would make lots of sense to call Geteras, you know, government center. However, I know we're not at that level, but we soon will.
Yeah, I, I think it's an exciting development. I think one of the things that I think makes a lot of sense is having all government offices in one building. I think that there'll be a lot of different opportunities there, synergy, collaboration, things like that. So I also think that it sets into motion some other exciting developments that have to do with some of the other buildings. And I know that Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, that part of our comprehensive plan is to minimize our, our footprint, right? And the number of buildings that we're managing and things like that. So I think that it will make us a little bit leaner and meaner. So.
Well said. And I think it's important also, just one quick thing, is that we have limitations on what we can do with some buildings. So, I mean, this has to be used for a government purpose if we want to maintain the endowment. The common, buildings on the common cannot be used for anything but education under the reason they were donated. So we're limited in what we can do with some of these. So this becomes like a great purpose and very fitting location, I think, for the town. And plenty of the, plenty of parking as well as, you know, I believe the school department's keeping the baseball fields, but the fields will still continue to be there and be used as they are currently. So.
I think everybody captured it well. I'll, I won't reiterate what I said at the last meeting, but being able to have the kids use it summer or anytime to have the gymnasium inside usable. And in times where we need those larger meeting space, we have it built in there. I think it's an outstanding use of the building. I think we have a clear path on, on downsizing. Nothing that we do, nothing that we do is in a, in a silo. So each piece of this, right? We're in a, we're in a building right now that has a purpose and it will continue to have a purpose when the town no longer is using it. Reynolds is the same way. It's a beautiful building. We did sell Oliver approximately, say, a year or so ago. It's been around that time. And I think for the record, for all of us, we don't say that flippantly. These are beautiful buildings. They were given to the town to use as they were. So we don't say that with disrespect. We don't say that without the appreciation from the families that gave it to the town. And also, all of us, if you did, that went to school there and played in the schoolyard and, you know, pushed on the left or right-hand door and sat in Mrs. LeBeau's in kindergarten, or happens to be me. It's, they're beautiful buildings. And, and we take this seriously. But we also take seriously that we don't need this many buildings. This is a very appropriate use for this building. And we downsize, we save taxpayer dollars, and we use the buildings best and highest use. So I think it's, I think it's an outstanding next step. So we had a motion and a second to move forward as stated. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, I just have a clarity on the motion. So is the motion to move forward with the future use of Geteras School to go out to RFQ? Because that was mentioned?
Yes.
To go out to RFQ and to come back with the project timeline? I just.
So RFQ for project manager. That was.
For project manager?
For project manager.
Yes. Mr. Administrator?
And then project manager will produce.
So Tim, I agree with the administrator. Could you make it as, unless you disagree, that it's RFQ for project manager and architectural services?
Yes.
And Tony, you second that?
That was what I said.
Perfect. Outstanding. Discussion?
And I think Tim had the question about the timeline.
Yeah, and in regards to the timeline as well. And I know that will, Mr. Administrator, that will get flushed out with the project manager. So the RFQ, once we go forward with that and we move forward with the project manager, they'll be able to put together a more concise timeline for us. So I, I kind of, in that motion, I want a timeline, but I know that's going to fall in place eventually. So.
And then the disclosures to the respondents would be our budget's about 1.7 million, right?
That is correct. And there's opportunity as we want to phase things, but we will stay within that time, excuse me, that dollar figure, at least for the advertising purposes. Any other discussion from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Eric, thanks again for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H2. This is discussion and consideration of the resolution regarding the general homestead law allowing mixed-use combination properties to be eligible for an exemption of the portion of the residential property. This is continued from October 1st, 2025.
Hi, Chris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good.
Good. So you obviously are here to kind of. Good. So you obviously are here to kind of give us some clarity. The council had asked, what's the impact? We all wanted to move forward with this, but what's the impact? What was yours?
So I did a little analysis. I think we needed to try to get a good guesstimate of how many properties would be added to the residential homestead rate, because that burden then needs to be shifted to those that are not receiving that rate. So I did write up a memo. We have about 90 mixed-use properties in town, which is about 1% of our total tax base. And to estimate how many of those 90 would actually qualify and, you know, how many of those 90 are going to take advantage of that homestead rate? I estimated based on our, our two to five families. So our two to five family properties about 30%, 33% qualify and take advantage of that. So I wrote up a couple scenarios. I think the most likely scenario is scenario one, where you'd have about that, you know, 30 of the 90 properties getting that lower rate. That would shift about $18 million of assessed value to the to that lower assessed, or I'm sorry, that lower tax rate. And what that would result in is those that don't qualify would see that burden. It'd be less than one penny per thousand if that was the scenario. Since we don't really know how many, I don't think it would be more than the 30%. If anything, I actually think it would be less than that. But I did spell out, just so you would know, if half of the properties were to qualify and take advantage of that lower tax rate, it would be about a penny per thousand or one cent per thousand. And then scenario three, if all of them, which that's very unlikely. So, but that's the maximum. That would be about two and a half cents per thousand. So in, what is that in terms of taxes? I would guess that scenario one's probably most likely, a $500,000 house would see a tax increase, I'm sorry, $500,000 mixed-use property would see about a $3 to $4 a year tax increase. If it's a million dollar property.
So if I pay a thousand right now?
Correct.
Then I would pay 1,004. Is that correct?
Correct.
1,004 dollars. Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, you'd be paying more than a thousand.
I'm paying more than that right now. I know everybody.
This is based on, right. So, and then I spelled out the other scenarios as well. When you get up to about half, you're looking at about, you know, maybe a $10 increase for a $500,000 property or $20 for a million dollar property. And then if everyone was to partake in this, you'd see about a 12.50, $12.50 increase per year for a $500,000 property and about a $25 increase per year for a million dollar property.
So very small impact, at least, I mean, $6, $8 a year is, is nothing. So in, as an impact, and it seems this council was in agreement that we wanted to move forward with it with this information.
Right.
For me, this, this seems very appropriate to take the next steps to go forward. Counsel?
I concur. I would say that we probably should refer that to the, to the administrator and the solicitor to draft.
The enabling legislation, an amendment to the enabling legislation.
Exactly.
What you said, Tony.
Outstanding.
Nice job, Tony.
Motion made by Tony. Is there a second?
Second.
So motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to refer to the administrator and the solicitor to draft amended or amend our enabling legislation on this. Discussion. Chris, did you want to add anything else? No? Okay. Hearing nothing else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for your hard work on this.
Chris, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I1. This is the Bristol Warren Regional School District. And this is for consideration of bill, for building permit fee waiver for the public benefit under Rhode Island General Law 23-27.3119 for work being performed at Mount Hope High School, Cole Andrews Elementary School, and Rockwell Elementary School.
Welcome, welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I did submit a letter to the town council. I also submitted a similar letter to the Warren Town Council. This is not something that we just decided. This is a conversation we've had all along at the building committee and had this as a consideration. Local permit fees are not reimbursable under RIDE rules. And in addition to that, we didn't consider them in our cap. So if we were to decide if the town did not waive them, it would put us above our cap and would just mean we couldn't do some of the extra projects that would come in under the contingency. So far, we've been able to include the football field, the stands and the concession and the tennis court lighting, we're hoping. If we continue on the track that we're on, we will be able to include the baseball field, which then we would give you back the Gittera's field if that were to happen. But all of that is, is kind of predicated on the hope that both towns would consider waiving the local permit fees.
Did you say both towns? Did I hear that correct?
I'm going before the Warren Town Council, I think in two weeks, 22nd, 22nd, thank you, Matt.
And they have the two, two schools over there. There again, the work done.
Yes, there'll be some work. I mean, obviously less work in Warren because we're just doing some work at middle school in Hugh Cole, whereas in Bristol, we're building an entire high school. So the permit fees are much higher in Bristol than they are.
Are there permitting fees for Rockwell and Hugh Cole? Or, no, I'm sorry, Colt Andrews as well?
Yes.
So you're looking for all three?
Yeah, since we're touching every building, there are permit fees at every building.
Do you have an idea approximately what would be the savings if, in fact, we waived the fees?
Yep, I think for Bristol, it's, I want to say 1.3 million. Am I right?
So the fees are there and the savings would be there, like the bond.
Oh, so the savings of waiving the fee versus rolling it into the bond would be 440,000. The permit fees are 1.2 million for Bristol. But of course, if we roll that into the bond, we paid over 30 years with the four four point something percent interest that we would have to pay.
Can you help me with the 440,000? I didn't understand that part.
I think maybe Chad could help you with that. 440,000. I'm a good reader. I don't know about explaining that.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
So just some, some pretty quick math and I have some extras here if it helps you to see it visually.
Sure.
So the 500,000 is the interest, right?
Thank you.
I guess we're going to find out.
Over the 30 years. Thank you. 30 years, right?
About 30 year and four and a half.
Four and a half.
Chad, can you give one to the clerk also, please?
Yes.
Thank you. What are you, Oprah? One for you, one for you, get a thing?
All right. So just to, to run you through how this is set up here. So the Warren permit fees have been calculated at about $159,000. Bristol fees around 1.28 million dollars. Of course, that would be rolled into the project bond. The assumptions on the bond are 30 year at four and a half percent. It hasn't gone to market yet, so that's not confirmed. But those are the same assumptions that we ran two years ago when we were looking for funding for the project. So the way the regional agreement reads, Warren pays their share based on enrollment, roughly 38%. Bristol pays the remainder, 61, 62%. So the total amortized cost of those permit fees is that 2.8 million dollars. And then it would be split between the districts based upon enrollment. So that's the delta that you see, that 440,000. The very bottom of the page would be Bristol's costs after paying your interest on your bond on your share of the permit fees.
Gotcha. Okay. Wow.
And subtracting the revenue of course from the thing. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yes.
All right.
It's a whole lot of money.
So we're going with the 1.7, right?
Yes.
In exchange for 440,000 in savings, right? Is that the?
440, is that what you said?
440 in savings, yeah.
Yeah.
Over a 30-year period.
So to oversimplify, I know Matt Cabral is here as a building official in that capacity. I think to oversimplify it, we're, if we charge this, we're just charging ourselves.
Exactly.
I know it's kind of simple. That's oversimplified on it. I mean, if we, if we leave it that simple, I suppose. I don't know what the council thinks on this. I think there's a couple of things is that the administrator and I had a conversation with Mr. Cabral earlier today just for some clarity points. And the administrator pointed out and Mr. Cabral pointed out a couple of times that there are state fees that you would be subject to that we cannot waive. Approximately, if I recall correctly, 125, 150,000, right around there that you would be responsible for because the town would get those fees. So.
Right. And that, that piece of it is captured. So we understand that.
So just as, right. So just as you're paying for desk chairs and concrete, this would, this would be one of the, first, we can't waive it because it's not ours to waive, right? And we would get those fees. We would get charged that.
Yeah, you collect them and then pass them on.
Right. Okay. All right. So we're on same page on that. I, another question for you is that you mentioned, if we don't do this, if we said no, what, you're going to borrow the money. So these things will move forward regardless. It'll just cost more. Is that correct?
It would be bonded, it'd be funded out of the project's contingency. So there's a roughly $9 million contingency account. It's in very good shape right now, but I mean, you'd really, you're stealing from Peter to pay Paul. You're going to pay it back over the next 30 years and then some.
So to be clear, I'm not suggesting that I want to go that direction, but I wanted it known that if we don't do that, you mentioned lights, you mentioned all that. That's going to happen regardless. So that doesn't mean.
So we're shrinking the contingency by 1.7.
Okay. All right.
What is the amount of, the amount of interest you'd pay on it?
So right now they're operating on a ban. It hasn't gone to market for the 30-year note. That won't happen.
No, I mean, if, if we didn't do this.
If you didn't waive it, yeah, of course. Yeah, no, the interest.
So what is, what would it be? What are you basing these numbers off of?
This is based on four and a half percent. So the market's doing a little bit better than that. Those are the numbers from two years ago. So hopefully some improvement on the bigger picture of the project. Anticipate, but who knows what, what the market will bring a year or two from now.
Personally, I'm in support of approving the waiver for the building permit fees. I mean, borrowing just ends up hurting us, taxpayer. We end up having to pay more. So it, you know, it didn't make, doesn't make sense to not do this, but colleagues.
Yeah, it just seems like it's short-term. It'd be nice to get the 1.7 million dollars in revenue, but I think the right long-term decision here is to do this. I think what it does is it allows us more of those projects that are on that list, the contingency list. And it could be possible that maybe some of those projects on that list are things that could save money in the long run too. And so now all of a sudden, there's that cool benefit in addition to, to that. So.
I have another question. Why those on the contingency and not something else? Why were those left to be, maybe we'll do this? And I'm speaking to all of you. I don't know who makes that determination. But why that choice and not, for example, a building or an improvement of a portion of a building? Why, why did you choose these things to say, we don't know if we want to do it or not, or can do it or not?
So it was a building committee decision earlier this year when they were locking that final budget for, went to bid.
School committee building, right? Not the building.
School building committee. And then also it does go to the school committee beyond that.
But I didn't think the building committee made those decisions. I thought that was.
Recommendation to the school committee, the school.
The recommendation, but not the decision on it. So it's ultimately the school committee. Okay. All right. So why, why these things? So if the school committee makes that final decision, why these things as contingency and not something else?
So these were the items that were left in the list of items that we wanted to do with this bond. So we priced out, we got all of our numbers, our OPMs worked with us, we had estimators. And when they were done and we came to what we said, what we promised the taxpayers would be our cap. And there was a gap between that cap and what we wanted to do. So we made a list of the items that we wanted to do that were above that cap. And then that's what was prioritized, as Chad mentioned, originally by the building committee. They they asked, they, they prioritized first and then we brought that to the school committee who made the final vote on the prioritized list of contingency items.
That helped me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question.
Other conversation from the council? I know we haven't taken a motion yet.
No, but that was a great question because it just made it even clearer for me. Thank you.
So we just need a motion, counsel?
I make a motion. Do we approve it?
Second?
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, that we waive the town fees. Or I'll call out fire and building specifically, but to a tune of approximately, and not limited to this, but just for reference of about 1.28 million dollars. As, and it's already been referenced, so it's just for references purposes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I2. This is Director of Parks and Recreation, Resenhausen. This is a request for council authorization to submit two RIDEM recreation development grant applications. One small grant for Veterans Memorial Park in the amount of 125,000 with a 25% town match to repair the bridge and replace the playground. And one large grant for the town common in the amount of 500,000 with 25% town match for new playgrounds with rubberized surface and an adjacent senior friendly fitness station behind the former Wally School.
Warren, when I read this, and I must tell you, I saw repair the bridge, I ran scared for a little bit. Turns out it's just a playground. So go ahead.
Well, no, it's, it's the wooden bridge that crosses the creek. But yes, it's a playground.
But when I hear bridge, I really do just get nervous.
Some of the pylons are in rough shape and the planks we repaired and replaced some, but it needs a little bit more than what we can normally do in our budget coming forward. So I figured this would be a good time with this grant opportunity. If we were to get it, be able to replace the playground and do that same time because the grants have to be in the same location.
So Warren, share with, the council has this in front of them, but just for the council and the public, what are you proposing? Where is it? What would change?
Okay. So the, as I said in my letter, the DM only puts these grants out every other year. So if you remember, two years ago, I was in front of you asking to replace the playground on the common and add a vault bathroom system. And then we were replacing a different playground. One of those playgrounds had been replaced since then because of a safety concern. So this year with the two grants, it would be to, as I said, Vets Park replaced the playground that's there and do some repairs on that bridge, a little bit more hefty repairs on that bridge so that it'd be in good shape. And then the town common, we're still looking to, because that's our biggest one in town and this is the largest grant that they offer. So it makes sense to try and apply for the largest one we have to do. So the town common will be replaced. It would have a rubberized surface, which would make it fully handicapped accessible. And part of the reason for that is not just to, to make it a rubberized surface, but to help with the drainage issues, at least in that area. Wes, Wes and Smith, not Smith and Wesson. Oh, Fussin' O'Neil, sorry. In their report, did mention that when we were, when we were going to.
Totally different things.
Yes, totally. Did mention in their report on the drainage that when we were to replace the playground that we should look at an alternative surface or material. So it makes the most sense. We can get it fully handicapped, be the only one in town. And at the same time, instead of putting bathrooms in, we can put some senior friendly fitness station behind the Wally School, which would be open hopefully by then. This grant with your approval tonight, and the only thing I really need from you besides the approval, the right is that you'd have to commit to those funds, the match, if we were to receive the awards. That's why I need to make sure I come in front of you to, to do that. So in between the two grants, it would be a little, about $208,000 or so when you add up those two numbers for the two different grants. But that would give us approximately $870,000 to do the two projects. With the 25% match coming from us and the, and the rest coming from the DEM.
Warren, what is senior friendly fitness station? What does that actually mean?
So it's, it's going to be, again, it will be a rubberized surface there. So there's no trip hazard when they're coming in because it's no loose surface. And it would be something that would deal with balance. So it may be a, a sitting station where they can do pull-ups instead of on the ground. It'll be balance boards, but not ones that are going to move, just something with handles on it. It could be upper body treadmill type thing for their arms instead of their legs. Those type of pieces of equipment. So it's senior friendly, especially with the Wally School, the old Wally School opening up. Hopefully before this comes in. So, and I, I just had, I included some pictures of some conceptual possibilities. By no stretch of the imagination is this what's actually going to go in. But I did ask some companies that we've worked with in the past if they're interested in volunteering their time to put stuff together so that I could submit it with the grant if you guys give me the permission to write the grants.
I just smiled at Mary because she's very happy to hear that you're not going this direction because.
The circus, I call it the circus one, the red, white and blue one.
Well, that funny story that the designer for that particular playground is a Bressonian
Oh.
from, from Sid's, Sid's daughter from, from Bank Newport. So she knows the relevance of the Fourth of July in Bristol, and that actually has a red, white and blue stripe going down the, the rubber surface. And those cars are like a, like a parade car with kids can sit in and, and that type of stuff. So that's why it was that. It does not mean we're going to go with that. They all know that if we were to receive the grants, we have an hour of P process that we go out with, and then it opens up the door for everybody. And it's, you know, voted on by a subcommittee that looks at all of them.
For clarity, so the request total, the 25% match for all of the grants that you've mentioned is approximately 208,000 dollars.
Yeah, it's 166, 66, 67. For the, or 41, 667, I should say. For the small grants and then for the large grants, the towns matches, one, 166, 667.
And we have these proceeds in capital to be able to do this? Is that, am I correct with that?
Not yet.
Or we would need to build it for next year?
Correct, because they won't.
We just need to commit now and build it for next year.
Correct. Because they're not going to announce this until spring sometime. It could be May that they announce. Because deadline for submissions isn't until November 18th. Last year when I, or two years ago, when I applied, there were 37 applications that they had to go through and they only awarded, I think, seven. So it was kind of difficult. They have a little bit more pot of money this year. So hopefully being the second time around and, and some, some renderings of what it could look like might help the case as well. So once we found out, then it would have to be the July cycle that we start to work on it, but.
But I think, I think lucky for us, I mean, if we had to like show commitment beyond, you know, resolution, whatever. I mean, we have money in reserves and we could always pay ourselves back or just use the reserve. So it's like, we could definitely do it. I personally am in favor of it. I think it's always great when you can get like 75% paid from somewhere else. And for us to do the match. And I, so I, I, I'm very much in favor of.
I'm going to take that as a motion, Mary?
Yes, I think that is a motion. I'm just not a fan of the red, white and blue one now.
Mary's now stated that twice, just so we're clear. So we had a motion from Mary, seconded by Tony to commit to, if we are successful with both grants, a total of 208,000. Let me just get that exactly. Again, 208,334 dollars is proposed. Any other discussion?
Just that I'm also in support. It, it's again, safety with the pedestrian bridge. I know that desperately needs repair. I've gone over that accessibility and recreation. So I really hope you get it.
I do too.
Yeah. I hope we get it too. It's we. So.
We.
Yes, yes.
We. Any other discussion?
I think the motion also needs to include that the director go out to submit the grant, authorize for him to submit the grant to D E M. Do you need authorization from the council to do that as well?
Yeah, I think if you, you're approving my letter, you're, you're giving me permission to write the grant.
Yeah. So what do you, what do you need from us? Do you need just that, that we, you know, that we voted in? That we voted for? Or do you need like a resolution form? It doesn't matter, right?
I, I just think I need the minutes saying that, that you guys met and that we discussed it and that you voted to support it.
Okay.
That's what we did last night.
Perfect. If additional information is necessary, please tell us. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I three. This is D E M. This is proposed modification to the Bristol and Westerly Industrial Pretreatment Program. This is requires response by November 21st, 2025.
And this is an echo of ourselves, right? So these are the actions that we took and D E M is telling us we did them. We just need to receive and file unless we want to take action on.
Correct. And D E M needs to do that, their own public process. So this is part of that super change.
Yeah. Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I four. This is the North and East Burial Ground Commission, and this is in regards to proposed price changes to the cemetery fee schedule.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. So we're not making any adjustment to the fees. What we're doing is informing the town and the council that we now have two brand new columbariums at the cremation garden. Those will start selling as of November 1st. So we're just informing you that they're there and that the price has changed from five years ago, which is the last time we had any available. There's also a change to the bronze memorial you'll see there. Those are the little ones that go around the, around the pond. We're in works to bring more in. Currently we have nothing other than in-ground burial at the cremation garden. So those two columbariums are to bring up inventory on non-in-ground burials. It's 192 couple units. So each one is 96 times two.
For clarity for us, what we're looking at is, I won't call out each one, but there's plots at 5,000 and it's in parentheses, no change. When we get to the columbarium and the bronze memorial and it says 3,500 and 3,000 respectively. But it says in parentheses, from 1500 slash 1800. And then the bronze memorial says from 2,000. So it looks to us that these are increased costs. Is that not correct?
Correct, but not in service fees. They're in property ownership.
Can you help me with the distinction? I'm sorry.
So when, when you purchase a cemetery lot at all cemeteries, you purchase the ownership of the property itself. When it needs to be opened, that's a service fee of an opening slash closing charge. So we're not making any changes to the service fees, which we made a year and a half ago-ish. It's just now we have new inventory and plans for more inventory. Like I said, we're planning to add some more of those bronze or brass memorials around the pond. In addition to the regular body of the cemetery, we're also beginning the process to open new sections back beyond the recreational center. But we're just coming to inform the town and, and you all that we have the space.
Gotcha.
And that there is now a price for it and that they will be officially on sale as of November 1st.
November 1st. Excellent.
And he's, this is like a competitive rate to what other places are charging for similar kinds of things?
So we're kind of in a unique situation where we're kind of setting the example. But this is pretty fair market value. In our area, there isn't anything really to compare us to. But nationally, something of this comparison, it is, it is on, on par with that. Some folks, some places choose to do, and we did originally with the original columbarium where there was like a hierarchy. You know, middle price, eye level was one price, higher, lower were, were different prices. Every, every position is just going to be one rate.
Any other questions from the council? I'm going to ask the solicitor if he wanted to share something.
Yeah. So I'm just, normally the, I was just looking at what the clerk was showing me with the new things that you're adding. And normally fee schedules are approved by the town council. So I think I, I would ask the council to approve your proposal.
So this is not just informational, this is required. That's, okay, please, continue.
The way the agenda item is listed, you can do that this evening.
Excellent. Okay. All right. So, and the changes are the columbarium and the bronze memorial?
Yep.
Correct. Just what we've added in inventory.
Okay.
Well, the grave, the traditional in-ground grave price is up by a hundred dollars. No, yes, up $100.
Sorry. Thank you.
So Mary correctly just pointed out the traditional in-ground grave price was 14. Now it is 1,500. And then we made the distinction there on the columbarium and the bronze memorial. Okay. All right. So what's the council's pleasure?
So I make a motion that we approve the proposed adjustments. I don't know, use a different term.
It's, it's listed here. So I think that works. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one. This is Town Administrator Contente, and this is in regards to approval of an expenditure for up to 16,000 from the finance department salary, salary line to pay a financing and accounting recruitment firm in Rhode Island to fill the position of the deputy town treasurer. And this continued from October 1st.
Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. So as you've probably seen, we are, we're still searching for a deputy treasurer. The search has been ongoing since July. We've had a number of interviews. We've advertised East Bay newspapers, East Bay media, the League of Cities and Towns, towns website, social media, LinkedIn, Indeed, ZipRecruiter. Some other outreach.
Feels like you've done nothing, sir.
We're doing it. It's been easy. Human Resources has reached out to a professional recruiter. And we did find somebody that is qualified. However, there is a finder's fee, and that's why we're, we've been reluctant to, to pay the fee, but we've done, as I said, an extensive search. And we think we have the right candidate, good fit. The fee is typically 25% of the first year's salary. We've got them down to 20%, but that's there. That's the best they can do. So it's 16,000 dollars. We have the money in the salary account, but we'd like to move forward and offer the person the position. But we've never used a recruiting firm before, but it seems so far it looks like it's going to work. But unfortunately there is an added expense. They, they guarantee to have the position filled for the one year, for one year. So if this person doesn't work out, they don't have to pay again, but they'll try to find us somebody else. So that's how the guarantee is. But I don't, we don't know where else to look for somebody qualified and we're, we're asking authorization to spend 16,000 dollars from the salary line to pay the recruiter.
Yeah. And I really, personally, colleagues, I don't want to wait on this. I mean, as we get closer towards budget and Carl, I know you've been, you know, it's, it's, you need, you need help with that, you know, everything. Mike, what's the motion just to?
Motion would be to approve the administrator's request.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, discussion?
Well, it's, it's a problem right across the state. I mean, it's not just finance either. It's planners. I think the chief has talked about police officers having difficulty recruiting there. It's, it's tough. Public services, it's tough to recruit people into that kind of stuff. And, you know, I, I hope through some of the stuff I'm doing and in my profession, that we can do things to help you guys out a little bit. But it's just going to take a little bit of time. So you guys are going to have to hang in there. But my hope is that this, you know, this fee that we're, that we're paying is an investment. And, you know, the thing is, you know, if this is a person that sticks around in five years, that fee that we're paying, we have to think about it as we're spreading this thing out over five years. And I think that this is a place where people would be very happy to work under Carl's leadership. And so good luck, Carl, keeping this person around and, you know, hopefully, again, hopefully things will improve at some point.
No pressure on you though.
And look, look at our town's history. I mean, tonight, 34, 35 years, 40 years. I mean, it's crazy. It's great.
I agree.
So a lot of people stick around.
I agree that this is appropriate. I also, I would have been reluctant initially, but as the administrator pointed out, great effort was made to find a good candidate. And I know that we had multiple applicants, but the, the, the right person was not found yet. And hopefully this is the way to do it. So my apprehension is, is, is quelled because of the efforts that are already been made.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
The next item on the agenda is K one. This is the Bristol County Water Authority Trytown Monthly Report from September 2025.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion would be to convene into executive session. I'm sorry. I just wanted to add, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Permission?
Good.
An appreciation and empathy for Councilwoman Perella's documentation about the street lighting. I am leaving the meeting and going with petitioner for F one, Mr. DePietro up to walk the neighborhood and to make a physical analysis and to report to the DPW director and the administrator on my findings.
I thought you were staying for the whole meeting because you wanted to see all of the whole meeting. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Solicitor.
Okay. Motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 42465A5 discussion related to the acquisition of lease surreal property for public purposes where or of the disposition of publicly held property where in advance public info would be detrimental to the interest of the public as well as 46, 42465A2 litigation relative to the Evergreen lawsuit.
Counsel? So move. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, we're going to, we go into executive session now and we'll come out for, to finish the meeting here in public. But we will turn off the cameras now. So we say goodnight to everybody. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.